All righty. So, items of interest to the superintendent?
I'm all set for this evening, thank you. We have a lot to share during the meeting.
Sure. School committee?
Well set.
Community?
Great. So at this time, we'd like to ask Alicia Cody to come up. She is our co-chair for our CPAC. She's here at the beginning of the meeting. We had the Resource Fair last Thursday, and she'll give us an update about how successful that was and also some plans for the year. Welcome, Alicia.
Hi, I'm Alicia. My co-chair, Amanda, could not be here tonight. We both have preschoolers tomorrow. But we just had a really successful Resource Fair at Riverside. A lot of new vendors. There were a lot of people. It was, I thought, really interesting and a great turnout. We're planning to do every other month to have a meeting, so we're looking forward to November. We're going to do a Basic Rights Night through the Federation of Children with Special Needs. And then, we look forward to 2020, doing either mindfulness or things like that for parents and IEP nights. So, a lot to think about, but we're excited. It's nice to have Amanda on board, too.
Yes. Thank you, Alicia.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you for leading CPAC. And I attended the vendor fair. It was well-attended, and there were a lot of great vendors there. So, thank you so much for bringing this to the community. And you also have a Facebook page?
Oh, yes, we do. We're using a Facebook page, and we've connected to other local CPACs and organizations, and it's a great way to share things that are going on through other organizations or webinars, a lot of educational articles and stuff like that. So, it's been a nice way to connect with a lot of people.
Yeah. I've seen a lot of good information that's been shared, so thank you for that, too. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy the first day of preschool tomorrow. Thank you.
So can I also just add one item under items of interest?
Oh, thank you, yes.
So, Donnie Eaton, who is a longtime employee of the town of Danvers as part of DPW, and one of the mechanics for town, was recently in a severe motorcycle accident. So, there's a benefit ride and barbecue that will be happening on September 15th. It'll actually be based out of Danvers High to help raise money for his care and to help his family with expenses.
What time is that?
Nine to 11:00. Cake stands up at 11:15.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Information from student representatives?
Great. So before they begin this evening, I'd like to have Dr. Columbino come up and share our two -- share some information about our two student reps to school committee for this year. And then they are ready to go.
You're ready to go, right?
I was born ready.
Hello.
She was.
So, as you know, Cynthia Boyd is one of us. She'll be returning again for a second year. Cynthia's a senior this year, still on the cross-country team and running. And she's also on the school council for the high school, which is great, so we'll continue that work in making those connections. And starting this year, I'd like to introduce Max Leitz. He's another one of our amazing scholars here at the high school. Max is the two-time defending state wrestling champ, right? Yes? Yes. And humble. And he is also going to be helping us out this year. And Cynthia and Max both already kick-started the year, and they were able to introduce themselves and be part of the policy subcommittee today, earlier at the high school. So, welcome Cynthia and Max.
Thank you. Great. So, this is wonderful, because they're really going to do the opening of schools presentation this evening. So, they have information from our seven schools about examples during the school year of student engagement with their project-based learning, our SEL, things that students have experienced. Well, since our students have really been here for three days, you'll hear a lot, too, about for this first presentation of what our teachers have been doing to get ready for the beginning of the school year. So, I'm turning it over to Max and Cynthia.
Great. O goes off to a great school year, great start this year. Our focus these first few days of school has been on building classroom culture and community. Students are working together to create classroom constitutions and develop new friendships. S.A.T. has begun the work of developing school-wide rules and expectations for students, focused on respect, responsibility, and perseverance. These norms will be shared with students later this month at a school meeting. In addition, there is now a calming corner in the principal's office, complete with sensory tools, a finger maze, and alternative seating to help students when they are feeling dysregulated or really uncomfortable.
All right. So, on to Highlands. Highlands had a fantastic start to the school year. Last week, they took the opportunity to build their community and classroom culture. They had their first whole-school committee meeting, community meeting, sorry, on Wednesday, where they talked about being a Highlands hound, which I was a Highlands hound. Yeah. And what it means. They welcomed their youngest learners, the kindergartners, with silent cheers and waves, and they also taught them about respect and responsibility and safety at Highlands. After a full day of nurturing the adult relationships at the DPS opening day, which I happened to stumble into, which was incredibly cool to see social-emotional learning being implemented not only amongst, you know, the students and the school system, but we had, you know, to see the adults, it was just really cool to see everybody working together. And I imagine that not everybody is always working, you know, the elementary to the high school. So, I saw a lot of familiar faces. That was really cool. They continued with that momentum while thinking about what their students would benefit from during their social-emotional learning. The three specialist teachers worked very closely with the students last year around SEL, and they shared their knowledge and experience with the K-5 teachers at the faculty meeting last week. And this also provided teachers with the opportunity to plan meaningful SEL lessons to implement with their students.
On to Riverside. Riverside has had a wonderful start to the new school year. The hallways are once again filled with smiling faces and children's voices. Already, students are starting off their days by learning how to be effective learning community members by working together to establish class norms and rules and by making new friendships. Over the summer, and with the support from the technology department, central office, and DPW, Riverside created a make-your-space room, not room, in conjunction with the library/media room. This new space allows students to be creative, to build, and collaborate in various STEM projects. Finally, thanks to a DEEP grant, Riverside placed a sensory path to one of its hallways. This path is made up of colorful decals that allow students to use their sight, touch, and movement in order to complete multi-step tasks. Students in preschool through 5th grade will have daily opportunities to enjoy the new sensory hallway.
And then, at Smith, again, it was an exciting school year. Sounds like all of the elementary schools had a great first week. The student, staff, and parents gathered together on the blacktop on the first day of school to complete opening exercises and welcome their new members to their teaching and learning community. In classrooms, teachers have been focusing on team-building and building authentic relationships amongst the students, and nurturing the adult relationships that we had talked about is also a priority at Smith this year. Following a very successful district-wide opening day, as I said, staff at Smith utilized a leading-together protocol to get to know one another better. In addition, teams of teachers met to discuss how to work collaboratively, collaboratively, sorry, to meet the needs of all learners. Lastly, this week, they were able to hold their annual kindergarten coffee for the parents, and this informational gathering will give the parents an opportunity to ask questions, meet the staff again, and learn more about a typical day in kindergarten.
Finally, to Thorpe, the one I went to.
Yeah. We're having some technical difficulties over here. Sorry.
Thanks to the generosity of DEEP, last spring, the special educators were awarded a grant to purchase a sensory hallways for Thorpe. The hallways have been installed, one in the main hallway and the other in the intermediate. The decals in the hallways instances of several exercises specifically designed to develop motor skills such as balance, hand-eye coordination, and spatial awareness. Research has proven that engaging in these activities provides a brain break for students, which helps them focus and do better in class. These sensory hallways are a great addition to our school and will benefit all of our students. Opening day at Thorpe...
Sorry. We're having technical difficulties. It keeps going right all the way back down, and it's quite zoomed in, so...
Opening day at Thorpe was awesome. We appreciated the opportunity to meet everyone as a whole staff and discuss how we plan to work together this year to reach the goals of the district's strategic plan and Thorpe School Improvement Plan. In addition, grade-level teams had the opportunity to meet with special education specialists and our reading teacher to discuss what the goals for individual students are for the year. Last Friday, during the SEL block, we unveiled the buddy bench to the school community. The bench was donated to Thorpe by the Ray Bork Foundation and the Joseph Middlemas Big Heart Foundation. The bench was placed adjacent to the playground in the back of the school, and we hope that it reminds the students to be kind towards each other and to always be inclusive. The town's DPW department did a great job with the installation, and we are very appreciative, as always.
All right. And now to HRMS, Richmond, a Hawk. They were also off to a great start. Like I said, everyone had great first weeks. The students attended assemblies in which they discussed school-wide expectations and concept of responsible decision-making skills. Students and faculty also participated in their first Project Hawk meeting of the year. Groups will be using a new, smaller format for the first meeting. The concept of bullying was discussed as well, and the groups participated in some activities to help everyone get to know each other. And during the summer, many of the HRMS teachers took part in a week-long training focusing on project-based learning. HRMS is also excited to announce its addition of the Project Lead the Way curriculum with a new course in computer science. Lastly, 8th graders will now take a year-long course in civics.
On to Danvers High. Here at Danvers High, we had an amazing start to the school year. As of it, same with every other school. Both our students, teachers, and administrators took advantage of the number of learning opportunities. A number of our teachers took part in a week-long training camp, training on project-based learning, developing comprehensive PBL instructional units on topics ranging from creative monetary and fiscal policies in economics to applying trigonometry to solve real-world problems. Members of our leadership team participated in the ECLC Leadership Institute, learning from other districts around the best practices for multi-tiered systems of supports.
Thank you.
It's all the schools. I think unless I'm missing one.
It was a very good beginning of the school year. Thank you, Cynthia and Max.
I think our ratings are going to go up.
I know.
They're all watching it for me. We know. No kidding. Thank you very much.
Can I ask, which school actually had the most amazing start?
Well, I would argue DHS, because I came back to school. Only joking.
Thank you very much for that.
Yeah. It sounds like we had a really successful start to the school year, and it's really exciting, I know. I imagine that the opening day was really a big success for the faculty and everybody that works in the Danvers Public School System, and it was just really heartwarming. I have gone to quite a few schools since before I came to Danvers, and it has been very wonderful to see us, you know, make growth in our social-emotional learning and our curriculum, and you can really tell that we're dedicated, and it's just nice to see it from a student perspective. And I understand that sometimes, you know, people my age don't really understand that, but it's amazing, and we are making such good progress, and I'm really just proud of everything that we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Good job. I agree with all of that. Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Information from the superintendent?
Thank you. So, I'm only going to show a couple pictures from opening day, from that, in the beginning of the school. So, for the Danvers Public Schools now, we have Whitney Hatfield in our office, who is working on the social media. And every Monday, she's been putting out a picture of student artwork, and over the last couple of days, we had pictures that parents shared with us of the first day of school with those little signs in front of their house, the first day of preschool, or first day of 3rd grade. And then, these pictures here, we just posted up there of what our day that Cynthia was talking about. And you can see over here on the left-hand side, or sorry, it's right over here, the right-hand side, is a rainbow. So, we had a T-shirt, a different color for every school, the seven colors of the rainbow, and again, looking at partnerships between our music department here, the fine arts, and then also the life-touch photographer came and took this picture for us. And as a faculty of almost 500, we were able to do this in record time before the rain started to come. The day was beautiful, and then it just sort of like lightly rained, and then it stopped in. So, it was an amazing day. We'll continue to use that word. And here are a couple pictures of the adults in action, learning about the five SEL competencies.
Next time, we need one of those news helicopters that leave Beverly to take your picture from a higher angle. We'll work on that.
Yeah.
No drones allowed, because you're in a drone-flying zone because of the airport.
Oh, okay.
So, we would encourage everyone to follow on Instagram, or Twitter, or Facebook, and to see the Danvers Public Schools in action. Every couple of days, there's more pictures and stories about what is happening in each of our schools.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next, under information from the superintendent, we would like to introduce our newest member to our administrative team. And at this time, I'd ask Dr. Columbino to come back up and introduce Peter DeMuro.
Hi again. So, we are thrilled to have Peter on our team. It feels like strange to be introducing him. He already feels like he's a part of the team, and has been here for a really long time, which is great, but he's only been here for really a few weeks since the summer officially. So, Peter brings with him a wealth of knowledge as a teacher and STEM coach previously at Salem and at Danvers. He also piloted the Project Lead the Way biomedical science course last year, and he is just, he's an awesome member of the team. His impact's already been shown. He's added a couple of really great ideas to the therapeutic learning center and ways to make that even better than its pilot year, which is great. So, I'd like to just welcome Peter to our team.
Great. Peter, if you'd like to come up for a moment in case there's any questions. Thank you.
Anyone? Arthur?
Oh, just welcome to the group.
Dean.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. No, same. Welcome and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thanks.
Glad to have you here. What's Columbino really like?
We can talk after.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
No, congratulations and welcome. I know it's going to be a great fit, and thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say how appreciative I am. Starting last year, I was so excited to pilot the biomedical science program, and moving into this year, I'm just looking forward at supporting the students at a more global level. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're looking forward to our administrative team at the high school this year with Jason, and then we have Amy Gerard and Sean Emberly as our 11th and 12th grade assistant principal, and Peter has the 9th and 10th grade. So, making that transition from 8th grade to 9th grade with our students has already started. So, thank you. All right. Go team. Thanks. Great. Okay. Next, for our strategic plan, I've asked Mary to present about the goals for this year. Well, this part of the strategic plan is really just an update on professional development and new teacher orientation, and then she's going to come back and do our year-two goals. Thank you, Mary. I was moving too quickly.
So, we had a very busy start to the school year, starting with August, the week of August 19th. And we had a school committee meeting on the 19th, but then we did two days of an administrative retreat, and which was off-site, really gave us time to really do lots of planning during the day as administrators. And then we moved right into new teacher orientation on the Thursday, which we saw 25 new teachers. We welcomed them to the school and gave them updates on kind of like their benefits and their expectations of the school district. They met their mentor teachers and had lunch with them, so it was a really great day. We spent a long time meeting with their principals and the curriculum directors to really give them a good framework for what was going to happen. They also encouraged them strongly to participate in the professional learning that would happen the next week, so we were able to do that. Another added bonus to that was that we were able to bring in our Salem State Teacher Fellows as well into the new teacher orientation and bring them. So, they started to get some training before the actual school year started. So, I think they found that very valuable to kind of come in with some new teachers as well and be welcomed in with mentor teachers. So then, the next week started four days of professional learning for our faculty and staff. Monday, Tuesday is what we call the optional professional learning days, where the curriculum directors and Mary Tatum's office put together offerings for teachers that they can elect to take, and we had a good majority of our teachers taking us up on participating in professional learning those two days. Then came the opening day, which you've heard a lot about already today. So, that was a lot of fun to have, do a lot of team-building within our schools, do a lot of learning around professional, around social-emotional learning. And I'm going to just give you a little context for that day. Though we really had two goals for that day. I've been working with what we call a social-emotional learning steering committee. It started with our work from the Essex County Learning Community Grant, and then it grew into a bigger group. And that steering committee really worked last spring to plan what we would be doing this year, and they felt strongly that the adults in our district really needed to think about and learn about the five social-emotional competencies before we began that formal work with students. That work's happening more informally, teacher by teacher, depending on how well-versed they are in the social-emotional learning. At the elementary level, there's been training where they are implementing a 15-minute SEL block every single day to start the school day out with students, but we really wanted to work on the adults. So, that's our first goal, is to have the adults really start to think about, more deeply, about what each of those competencies are. And then also, we wanted to talk about the importance of self-care. Here we were, before the school year started, you know, we still hadn't started our 180 days yet, and you know those 180 days are a fast and frenetic pace for teachers. So, we really wanted to talk about self-care and wellness as an important part of being a part of the Danvers Public Schools. So, those were our two goals for that day, and it really was a fun day together. I had a group of 25 teachers that I, that really planned and developed this day and really thanked them for all the work that they did, because without them, this day would have really not have ever happened. And actually, they planned the day and came up with all the ideas for the day. So, it was great. So, as you can see, the picture on the left is the people milling about with their school color T-shirts on. It was the HME. That's how we started the day. The middle picture is a team engaging in one of the activities. And then, the last picture is the ending of the day. So, I thought, beginning, middle, and end, to give you a picture of what that was. And then, I also thought I would talk to you a little bit about how we restructured these days. Last year was the first year we started the school year out with the professional learning at the beginning of the year, rather than inside the school year. And we had kept to our old model of, you know, two curriculum professional development days during the last week of August, and then opening day on the Tuesday after Labor Day. And then this year, we flipped that, because we said it was kind of silly that we came, that everyone was back on Wednesday, but we didn't have opening day until like, you know, four days later. So, we flipped that around, had opening day that Wednesday, did a curriculum day on the Thursday. So, it was all based on your level. So, if you're elementary, y'all were here in the atrium with Julie and the elementary principals. The middle school was up in the NPR with their team, their team of four, and then the high school was up in C-213. So, depending on your level base, you were in one of those three places. Then, we went away for the Labor Day weekend and came back, and then the professional learning was all school-based, site-based. So, teacher aides, teachers, and all the staff were together, really talking about student expectations. And you heard about that when Cynthia and Max were talking, giving you the updates from the schools. So, it was an interesting way to start the year, and I think it was probably the more effective way to start. So, again, we'll refine for next year, but I think we're going to try to keep this structure for the next coming school year.
Very good. All right.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mary?
I just have a quick question, Mary. You mentioned the Salem State Fellows. Could you explain, is that student teaching?
Thank you.
Any questions, Mary?
I just have a quick question, Mary. You mentioned the Salem State Fellows. Could you explain, is that student teaching, or is that different? And how many do we have? And all that?
So, actually, I'm going to have Keith talk more about that.
Sure.
Because he's one of the starters of that program.
So we have seven Salem State Fellows this year. It's actually a full immersion program. So typically, student teaching is only for a certain number of hours during the year. These students are actually with us from the first day we open school with professional development through us, with us throughout the entire academic day. Built into that day is student teaching, so they do get their 100-plus hours that they need for the student teaching component. But they're actually with us for the entire school year. So it's a chance to immerse them into what being a teacher is really like before they go out and they get their first job, while also meeting that requirement. So they're kind of a elevated student-teacher.
Cool.
And obviously, it gives us an opportunity to see them in action. So if they're great at what they do, hopefully, they can find a position with us.
Yes.
Any other questions? Mary?
No.
Very good. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. The last part of information from the superintendent is our facilities update. And there's a lot that goes into the beginning of the school year with facilities also. So I'll ask Keith to give that update for us.
So on August 29th, we had our building tours. This kind of is nice to review where we went and all of the fun projects that were completed. So each year, it's a chance for DPW to show off all of the hard work that they did over the summer. So we started the tour actually at Danvers High School, just to meet here and for that new department heads to get to see the high school. We then went to the Thorpe School, where we got to see the new hallway that runs adjacent to the cafeteria up above and ceiling, where they actually completed an asbestos abatement over the summer. So that's our last school with a lot of asbestos. So each year, we've been trying to take a good chunk of that out to keep working our way around the building. We also got to see the sensory hall that Thorpe installed. We heard that Riverside also installed theirs. So we have two schools now to help kids with some of those movement breaks. We then went to the Smith School, where we got to visit the construction site for the new project. So over the summer, the ground has been completely cleared for where the new school is going to be. You'll see, if you go up there, that there's actually two levels now of the base that you can see, so where it's a two-story building versus where it's a one-story building. So you can really start to see where that school will be. We'll actually see a little bit of a lull coming up towards the end of September through the month of October. And then in November, we'll start work on foundations and steel. So then you'll really start to see the frame of the building coming up out of the ground. We're happy to report that we had a smooth start. So with the project, we have a two-way construction entrance at the old exit of the building. So we had, I think, only two trucks that I saw that attempted to come in during blackout periods. We have blackout periods to ensure everybody's safety. So we worked through that process. There'll be an official groundbreaking for the project on October 7th at 9:00 a.m. So everyone is invited to come and join us for that exciting milestone. The last stop was the Highland School, where we actually got the opportunity to go up on the brand-new roof that they just installed over the summer. So that was really a major feat for DPW, that the project ended up being more invasive than planned. So a lot of the interior ceiling grid had to come out, so all the ceiling tiles and the physical grid itself. So we really want to thank DPW for all their hard work at all the schools, but especially Highlands, that there was a lot of work that went into cleaning the interior and making sure that it was ready for when our students returned last week. And then also, just a thank you to our technology team, who was also hard at work over the summer. At the high school and middle school, the middle school's still in progress, but the high school now, there's wireless in all school hallways in addition to the classrooms. So really working on making that an environment where we have 100% coverage. And the middle school will be next. We're in the process of that, really, as we look at flexible learning spaces, to be able to have anywhere in the building serve where kids could work. The other meeting that we had to start off the year is our annual safety meeting. So we have our administrative team with a representative from each level, along with the police and fire department, that come together formally. Once a year, we meet with them on a regular basis throughout the year for different meetings, but this is our formal annual check-in. We were able to review our safety drill plans for the year, our fire drill plans, as well as CPR training for our school-based medical response teams. So with our transition to the ambulance contract to Atlantic, that looks a little bit different than it did with Lions, who were able to put together the final touches on that. So during the month of October, all of the school-based teams will become CPR-certified.
And we have some new dare officers?
We do. So we have two new school resource officers that are starting. So Officer Jeff Smith will be here at Danvers High School, and Officer Jason Sken will be at the middle school. And Steve Baldassari, who is our school resource officer at the high school, has been promoted to the sergeant in charge of the juvenile division. So we continue to work with Steve and look forward to welcoming Jason and Jeff. They're actually going to join us at our AC meeting tomorrow morning, so that they can meet the entire administrative team, and we're happy to get them on, onboard as part of the team.
Question?
Yeah, I have a question. Keith, on the Smith School project, sort of to the uninformed, I'm thinking, boy, a lull between now and October is when the weather is going to be best for the rest of the year. Is that built into the plan for some reason, or is it just getting crews in there?
So the original plan was actually that we'd be clearing the ground during September and October. And when we brought WT Rich on, the contractor, they said, well, why would we do that when kids are in session? Let's get in there over the summer. We can start a little bit earlier.
Okay.
And get the grounds cleared. Then as it works through the MSBA process and construction document submission and all of those procurement rules and government process, the steel will actually start in November is the earliest we could do it. And that's also an early bid package. So all of that is put into place to help expedite the project. And then the full construction documents will go out to bid sometime in January to really start in the spring. So originally, we could have been starting in the spring.
So we actually started early, and we'll be caught up.
Yes.
We'll sort of be on the right timeline in November. Okay, thank you.
Right. And they have plans in place to make sure that all the concrete and everything is winterized, and, you know, they have a robust plan for heating and making sure that we can meet all of the building elements and the building code elements.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Jeff?
Good.
Dave?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Arthur?
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business.
Thank you. We have one item, our Student Activity Accounts Policy. And the superintendent recommends the approval of the updated Student Activity Accounts Policy for a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? The update for student activity policy passed? Okay. New business.
Thank you. We have a couple items. Our first one is our goals for this coming school year. The superintendent recommends the approval of the proposed 2019-2020 DMS Public Schools Strategic Plan for a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We actually do have a short presentation for you first. So Mary's going to have that for us.
There are two documents there on the agenda for you. One is the actual action plan that we have. And you'll notice on the action plan, I grayed out, I left our final accomplishments from last year on there. And then when you get to the white part of the action plan, under each of the goals, that's the new goals for this school year. So the grayed-out part was what we did last year, and now we're moving into, so you can kind of see how the goals are building from the work we've done the year before. But this is, the presentation appears also on the agenda. So this is a synopsis of what those goals all say as well. So if you remember, the strategic plan has three strategic initiatives. One is social-emotional learning. One is coherent curriculum and instruction and assessment. And then the third one is student engagement. So we have goals around each of those areas. And then the goals that we, that we've set as a district also are going to be reflected in the school improvement plans that you'll be presented later. So the first one is social-emotional learning. And as we talked about earlier, we worked on, we kicked off the first goal, which is to develop adult understanding of the five SEL competencies, what they look like and feel like as adults, prior to formal work with students. We'll continue to be doing that in our professional learning activities throughout this school year. And then we are also looking to develop a vision and plan for pre-K through 12, a tiered model of social-emotional learning in Danvers for students. This plan will incorporate the five SEL competencies and adapt grade-level standards to address these competencies. And we're going to be, work to integrate cultural proficiency goals as well into these, into the plan and standards. In our second strategic initiative, which is coherent curriculum instruction assessment, we are going to be working on the FAR cycle. Are you ready? Do we continue to hear another year of hearing about the FAR cycle? So we're going to really work to more authentically integrate it into the daily work of teachers. What happened was, we were giving them set amounts of times to do that work, but it didn't always time out to when they were giving a form of assessment or analyzing student data. So we're really working hard to have more authentic time for them to work after school or before school in lieu of their common planning time. So each school is working on that, or each level is kind of working on, with their faculty, on when those times will happen. So we will also have some coaching sessions with the data leadership teams. So we'll meet three times a year to kind of move that work along. So always kind of pressing for the next, taking our work to the next level. So we'll be working on that. And then a big work we've been doing in curriculum, and we've already started on the professional learning days, was to really make explicit alignment among targeted priority standards in each course, and looking to make sure that we have formative assessments for those priority standards that are linked to the summative assessment. So that as we give the formative assessments along the way, to see if the students are really learning the material that we're teaching them, that we can make mid-course corrections with them, so that when they get to the summative assessment, they'll be more successful. And it's a really good way of diagnosing that. So we call it the learning trajectory, so that we're really making sure there's a through line from like teaching those standards to assessing them initially and making some mid-course corrections, and then assessing them at the end of a unit. So that's a lot of the work we'll be doing as far as curriculum-wise. We also, if you heard Cynthia talk about the multi-tiered system of support, part of that work that we've been doing is to put structures in our schedules, so that we can kind of have that time to catch students and intervene, and also extend students that have mastered those standards. So at the elementary, we're implementing an intervention-extension block. It happens every day for students at the elementary level for 30 minutes. And at the middle school, they were using, they're calling it the RISE block, which was formerly known as the SSR block. So it's a little more informal at the middle school and a little more formal at the elementary. So we'll be working to kind of monitor the implementation of that and make, you know, mid-course corrections along the way this school year. So you'll be hearing, I'm sure, reports from each level talking about the work that's happening. And then finally, we're going to focus professional learning on, on planning, implementing the small-group differentiated instruction. That has happened, you know, that does happen now, but we're really kind of targeting it to that FAR cycle, those formative assessments. So what we learn from those formative assessments, we're going to work to, right away, come up with some small-group differentiated learning, so that some kids can get intervened, some kids could get reinforced, and some kids can get extended within, right away, after really analyzing that student data. I also thought at this point, I would throw in some little update on what we're going to be doing with the Essex County Learning Community Grant. Remember, that's the grant with five other school districts here in the North Shore. And they are starting a workshop series on Universal Design for Learning, or UDL as it's known. And we have done some UDL work, but we're really looking forward to deepening that work and really kind of growing it here in Danvers. So we have a team of 13 people that will be attending those sessions, and that will be happening in October, November, and December. So they also, in October, are going to have some site visits. The first one will be to the Mashpee Public Schools, who have implemented a multi-tiered system of support, elementary through high school. And elementary is really the more commonplace that you would see a multi-tiered system of support. You know, it's because the kids have, there's so much reading data and math data, because their, and their school day is, it's a lot easier to do those types of interventions and supports that are needed. It's a little bit more difficult at the middle and secondary level. So Mashpee has already begun to implement that. So we'll be going on a visit to find out how they're doing it at the secondary level, so that we can come back and really think about how it applies to our middle and high school level. And then finally, we'll also go to the Henderson School, which is a fully, fully, full-inclusion school. It was, they had a presentation this summer at the Summer Institute that a lot of us went to, and it was amazing to hear that principal speak. It just was just so uplifting to think about the fully-inclusive classrooms that they have and the work that they are doing with all kids, and that how the supports are coming into the classroom, and that the adults all work together for all the students. So it isn't the special ed teacher just with the special ed students, but it's a special ed teacher and a regular ed teacher working together for all the kids that are in the classroom. So we really got a lot of inspiration out of that work, and we'll continue to do that when we're back here in Danvers and doing our administrative meetings. So we're looking forward to that. And again, that multi-tiered system of support will be part of that fully-inclusion work that we'll do. Then finally, the engage students is the third strategic initiative in our strategic plan. And we are working on really implementing that student-centered curriculum that we have in place already in the district. It's to really implement a curriculum in a student-centered manner, it takes a lot of craft and skill, and I think we're going to keep working on that with teachers. We did a great job of kicking that off on the curriculum day on the August 29th. The elementary level had the year of why, I think, is how they kicked off their thing. So the really diving down deep to like, why are, why do these programs teach these lessons in such a way? And why do we need to kind of implement them with fidelity? So that was a great way to get started. We're really going to work on making sure that we provide students voice and choice in their work, because that is really what brings that engagement. And at the high school level, they are working on the innovative pathways and early college options, planning for that this school year. And then we had, as I told you, at the last school committee meeting, we had a project-based learning week-long institute. So we had 17 units developed at that institute. So we're looking forward to supporting the implementation. We will, the instructor will be coming back during the school year to help the teachers with any kind of implementation issues they have with that. And then finally, we're going to really work on not, we can't always be doing a project-based learning, you know, unit in a classroom. So how do we take that, that spirit of the project-based learning, that engagement that kids have in doing those, those activities and lessons? And how do we incorporate that into our everyday lessons? So we're going to be focusing on sustained inquiry, student voice and choice, authenticity, so that there's like real-world applications, and kids really reflecting on the learning that they've done. So that is it.
Those are our goals. Questions for Mary? Eric? Do you have any questions for me?
Well, I don't know if it's a question as much as comments, that it's clear that we're sort of all in on the social-emotional piece and all in on the FAR cycle, and you can see that from the school improvement plans, too. And I actually like that in the sense that we've made a commitment to a couple of ideas that we think will make a difference. And project-based learning falls into that category, too. And so I kind of like seeing the more targeted approach, rather than trying to do everything all at once. And hopefully, we've picked the right things to hit that'll make a difference for the most students. But it feels like it's a logically developed plan, so I appreciate seeing that.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I like the, kind of the order as well, because, I mean, to me, the social-emotional learning is student-centered, right? It's focused on this, I mean, everything is student-centered. But I like the way this is organized, because that is predominantly, you know, you get that right, then you can get the academics, get a lot of the other things that we're talking about. Then the second one is the curriculum, the instruction, and the assessment. I will say, this is something, and I've mentioned this before, this is something I think the[1695.37] I will say this is something, and I've mentioned this before, this is something I think the community with the FAR cycle, with the formative assessments, the summative assessments, needs to understand that's how we evaluate student learning. You know, it's not the test scores that are floating around out there, it's not MCAS, it's not all this. It's, you know, the people who are in the classrooms with the students using a lot of this data. And that's why I like this is, look, this is very important, this is what we're looking at, this is what matters, right? Day-to-day, so I like that being, you know, kind of a key part of it. And then obviously, the third part is you get those two right, and then it's engagement. How do you, you know, expand that knowledge to other students? How do they, you know, help each other learn and progress as they go through? So it's the right plan, I think it works, and I'm absolutely glad to publicize it to a lot more folks as well.
Thank you. Thanks. Dave?
I think Eric and Jeff said it all. I'm good.
Arthur?
Can you, what is this intervention-extension formal block? I don't even, I don't understand what it is.
It's a block where we can catch students up on the learning that they're doing. So if we give these formative assessments and they tell us either the kid's very strong at something, or maybe, you know, a little weak in it, or really hasn't gotten it. And depending on, you know, where the child is, we make smaller groups, and we have other teachers come in to help support these smaller groups to reinforce their learning or to reteach the concept or to extend, depending on where your child is at.
So I kind of think I understand that, but like, is this going to be like an everyday thing?
It is an everyday, but only for 30 minutes. So what we were finding that, you know, you have the curriculum, you have to teach every day in your classroom. And so that to take, you know, a whole class or 45-minute period of time that you might be teaching reading and moving on to, moving on to another concept, you can't always just stop the learning. We have to keep moving along in the curriculum, but then we need an extra block of time to really have, let kids catch up, take them another minute to learn something more deeply or dig in, you know, dig in. They didn't quite learn it, ask the teacher some questions, teacher re-presents if you're not getting it so that you're able to really kind of move, instead of getting further behind as the learning keeps moving on, instead of you falling behind, you're able to stay caught up with the class.
So, I mean, that's all sounds fine, I'm just trying to figure out, so is, like, they could be, each kid could have something different that they're trying to figure out?
Yep, right. We're hoping that it's like more like groups of kids have like something different, and there's different models. You could do it, you know, have multiple groups in one classroom, or at Smith, when they had done their win block in past years, where one teacher would take the kids that really need the reteaching, and then another teacher would take the kids that need a little more reinforcement, they're right, almost right there, and then someone else would take it to extend the kids so that they would move to different classrooms, but be with a group of kids that are similar kind of state of their learning.
I'm just trying, so is it going to be like at the same time every day? I mean, how's it?
Yep, the same time every day.
And then the kids that don't have any problems can just?
Well, they get extended, which was always, you know, I feel like with some parent, you know, that some people, some.
If they've already done the work, then they need rest.
No, no, we've got to keep going.
Please, please, this is the problem in America. No, that's, that all sounds good, thanks.
Okay.
Just to dovetail on that, so you're, they'll be switching classrooms?
Well, it depends. Every, it's again, every grade level and every school would probably have a different approach to it, and sometimes they might switch classrooms if there was a particularly difficult concept or they really had to have a lot of reteaching happening. So that could happen, or it could be there's like three different groups of kids in a classroom, each in different things, and the teachers, and that's.
Trying to see how that works at the elementary level from a staffing standpoint, you've got to have, every classroom has to be, obviously, have a body of it.
Right. So yeah, we have Title I teachers, so at the elementary level, it's a lot easier to implement a block like this because we have Title I tutors, we have reading specialists, we have special educators, so all hands are going to be on deck to do that. Because they're all our kids, and we're all responsible for making sure that they make progress.
How would it look at middle school?
That's what we're, that's why I said it was informal at the middle school because we are, you know, again, it's different because it's, because it's the SSR block, so depending on what content area you're teaching, you land in the block. And I think, Adam, maybe I might turn it over to you if you want to explain kind of the beginning concepts of it so I don't misrepresent what they're doing at the middle school.
So we, we've always had SSR, which was sustained silent reading. So at different points in the day, each grade level, no matter where they were, they would silently read for 25 minutes. What we know is that, what we know then is we know where all the kids are, we know who they're with. So what we decided to do this year was, was say, let's use that knowledge that we have all the kids organizing in certain places and take it back to the team level and tell teams, meaning the teams, you know, Bowditch Team, Endicott Team, those teams, what do you need from the kids? What do you need to do with the kids? So the team can talk about, okay, the math teacher might decide, I need to reteach this concept to this group of kids, and it could be from any of their sections, so that maybe a group is with the math teacher. Maybe another group is being extended in a different place. We renamed it RISE, the S stands for still SSR, so there's still the opportunity to read, but what it does is it, we kind of gave the autonomy back to the teachers and said, we know you have the kids at this certain time, we know you know, based on your data, based on your work with them, what they need, let's use this time to make it happen. So we really, this year, we put it down to the team level and the grade levels. The exploratory teachers also will participate in this, so the E stands for extend. Extend could be, the block might just be longer, so rather than stopping a phys ed class and reading silently for 25 minutes, we extend the activity for 25 minutes because that's what makes sense for that part of the day. Or it could mean extend in the spirit of pushing those kids that have attained to a certain level, and we know that they need to be pushed further. So we don't have a formal plan that covers, you know, every block every day, but we have at the team level and at the grade level, they're working to come to agreements about what they want to do and when they want to do it. And what we're hoping is to sort of share out as a faculty at a couple of points during the year in terms of what worked, and then we'll standardize it based upon that. So this year is sort of, at the teacher level, they have the autonomy to really work with this. And this had been happening previously, sort of informally, but as a faculty, we thought it was time to kind of give permission, let's just, let's do this. You know, we don't need to sort of have it happen in certain places, let's make it happen across the board. So we're excited about it.
Great, thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
All set, everyone? No, thank you, Mary. Thank you to your team, the teachers, everyone that's working on this. It is a plan that we hope is going to help every single student because they're all our students and they all deserve or have the right to learn, so thank you very much for it.
We need a vote on this.
So all those in favor of the strategic plan year-two goals? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approving the plan? Any opposed? None? All set.
Thank you. Next, we move into our pre-K to 12 school improvement plans, and the superintendent recommends the approval of the proposed 2019-2020 pre-K to 12 school improvement plans for a first reading.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Make a short overview of this, and Mr. Crane made that connection already seeing from reading the school improvement plans, our principals. Our administrative team is here for any questions afterwards from our committee. In looking at it, for our strategic plan is what Mary just presented, the three pillars. Each of the schools have taken that, worked with their school councils, the elementary team, working together and coming up with where do they fall on the continuum of working through, moving forward, our students and our faculty with our three pillars. So you will continue to see, as Mary said, more opportunities for students' choice in voice, expanding the project-based learning at all the levels, particularly at the high school with the innovative pathways and our five industry sectors for incoming freshmen. You'll see that in the high school plan. And want to give an example of the social-emotional learning, how that looks across the seven schools. We're all moving in the same direction, but deciding on the culture and the climate in each school, what will happen. So for example, at the elementary level, we've spoken about this evening, an SEL block at the beginning of each day as part of the revised elementary schedule, so that all of them have that. Great Oak has, will be developing SEL II kits. Highlands will be using movement breaks. The Riverside and Thorpe School have the sensory paths supported from the DEEP grants. The Smith School will be developing an outdoor area with place-based learning. At our Holton Richmond Middle School, updating the Project HAWK with smaller group format and new lessons. And at Danvers High School will be the implementation of the year-two of our therapeutic learning center. So it gives you an example of how that continuum of work with social-emotional learning to fit the needs of each school. So that's really an overview of the school improvement plans, and again, our entire administrative team is here for any questions that you have.
Arthur?
I actually don't have any questions.
Dave?
I just have one, and it's for Dr. Columbino, not directly on the plan, but just, I'm curious to your thoughts on how the first year of the therapeutic learning center went and, you know, what learnings you had from it that you can move into the second year. This is pretty, I think, a pretty innovative thing to do last year, so.
Yeah, that's a great question. I think we learned a lot, I think we did a lot of good for a lot of students. I think it was a really, I think the collaboration was one lesson that we learned that's really important, to make sure, like, even the creation of the project, over the summer, we were able to work really closely with student services and curriculum and central office to make sure that we're trying to create a program based off of other school models and what made sense in terms of staffing, resources, what kind of profile of students that it would be meeting. And I think it, I think it did work really well in a lot of areas. I think moving forward for this year, like I briefly mentioned that Dr., Mr. DiMaro said, having like more policies and procedures in terms of really communication, right? So in terms of kind of like, how long are we estimating that a student's going to be in the therapeutic learning center, for what blocks, or if it's the whole day? We've worked on things like attendance as well, so real technical piece, like we created a code in Power School, so we can tell the classroom teachers that the student's present in the TLC room, which is great, so that really helps to be able to know exactly where students are all the time, which we did, but it just makes it quicker, more transparent, and to really work on again those structured plans so that we're making a plan as a, with a team approach for the student, because these students are, need a relatively high level of support, and to just work together for that.
I'm just wondering, as a follow-up, did you do any outreach to these students that were habitually in the therapeutic learning center, have maybe a higher level of anxiety over the summer to kind of maintain that in any way? And I don't know how exactly you would do that, but.
We've worked with them more at the beginning of the school year to touch base, to see where they're at, how they're doing. Yeah, but I think that's a great thing, especially maybe for next summer, too.
Yeah.
To make sure to continue those sort of year-long.
Touch points, you know, a few times throughout the summer, just, you know, make, so that anxiety doesn't build over the summer, suddenly the school year starts and they're back at, you know, potentially back at step one.
Yep, absolutely. And we're able to increase, knowing that the program was, this last summer, we created it, and we were a little bit limited because the master schedule, just timeline, was already created. This year, we had the luxury of being able to ask faculty before making the schedule, who's interested in being part of it, who wants to be in the TLC room, and be able to offer a wider range of content expertise for teachers in the room. So now we've expanded, so I know now we have more language, health and wellness, math, history, a wider range to be able to make sure students are supported socially, but also that they can make progress and keep up with academics as well.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Jeff?
If you want, you can stay up. I'll just, I'll use the high school as an example, I mean, I could pick anyone, but the goals are interesting. Talk about number two just real quick. It says coherent curriculum, instruction, and assessment, equity and excellence for everyone. So the word I kind of focus on is coherent. I mean, did it not used to be coherent, or what was the rationale for that? That's the first word you see, you're sort of like, was there an issue before, or?
I don't think, I think maybe, that's a really good question. No, nothing that, that wasn't really, I think it's a way that high schools are set up, where they traditionally might be really siloed or departmentalized. I think that coherent piece is just a reminder that we're all working together and anything we're doing, even if it's, it sounds or feels like a totally different initiative, like in, you know, the English class, that we can work across disciplines on literacy still. And that, sometimes it looks clearer, to me anyway, at least, walking into an elementary school, because the students are all there for the day, and it's just the model and some of the structure is the way the high school's set up. I guess it's just more around, again, like collaboration so that we're all working together towards the same goal.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I would have read into it, in particular, if you're still sort of focusing on students, if it's more coherent to students so they can visualize a career path and the curriculum they need to take to get there, that's the way I interpreted it, so.
Absolutely, yeah. And to prioritize, too, I get tips, sorry to add on, just that we're, because there's so much going on and so much that we could measure to really be really strategic and purposeful in what we're prioritizing, what are our, like, non-negotiables.
Yeah, and we talk about that a lot here, where we've got a list of five to 10 things. We assume on the school committee that if number one is usually the most important, I'm not going to say always, but, you know, if you're only going to read one or two things, it should be the top of every list, which is good. And then the second is goal three, which is reimagining high school. I feel like I asked this question for a lot of different topics, but I'm going to do it again anyway. So how much flexibility and leeway do you have to reimagine project-based learning, curriculum? Is this something where the state says, okay, you can do this and this, and project-based learning is good? Or do you have the flexibility and the freedom to actually go out and, for example, talk to colleges and say, what do you need our students to be prepared to do to enter college? Or talk to the local workforce and say, our students are going to be your workforce, what do you need? Do you have that flexibility, or is the state help you with that?
I think it's both. So I think there's definitely like the standards that we're all teaching to and accountable for, right, and that ultimately get assessed on things like MCAS or AP exams that we use a lot for measuring. The state, though, is also on board with the innovation pathways to do exactly what you just mentioned in terms of identifying and working with industry partners on what skills do students need, what experiences they need to have. We're doing things with, like Mr. Emble has been working with our guidance department on MYCAP, which is kind of flipping around college and career advising as one example. So now this year, ninth graders are going to be doing more deeper dives into learning about themselves, but also figuring out what, what are they interested in? And even if they don't end up doing that, just learning more about an industry that's projected to be high-demand, good-paying, something that the state's going to need in the future, and also be able to do things like, a concrete example, visit a college fair in ninth grade rather than waiting, right? So we have our students, why wait till 11th or 12th grade to have those conversations? So it's really about trying to start them earlier.
Great, perfect. Good, thanks.
Thanks.
Eric?
Whoop, Dr. Columbino. And you thought you were done, no. My question sort of dovetails a little bit on the whole student voice piece. So could it go as far as students being able to suggest particular courses or areas of study, independent studies that they could do, you know, within the school day but targeted on maybe something there's not a specific curriculum for? How would that look like as a practical thing?
Yeah, so that exists now, right? It's still like kind of in those sort of constraints of the sort of seven period or seven classes. But yeah, we do have some students like that have taken a course in neuroscience, for example, and so it's an independent study, they work with teachers. And that one, it's really about sort of within a course more, I think. So we're setting up some problems and trying to give students more flexibility, and we've seen that a lot, and we continue to promote it outside of school, not outside of school, but outside of the classroom, I guess.
Sure, yeah.
In terms of like our Women of the World Club, who put together a panel on sexual harassment, which was great last year, students in SUFA putting together different panels, the Why You Matter campaign, again, like collaboration on three different organizations putting that social-emotional learning event together. So to keep, keep trying to make conditions so that our teachers and students can, can shine and really show how creative and amazing that they are.
Well, I love it. I think, you know, if you can, if you can identify a student's passion.
Yep.
Boy, then they're going to do well in that area, but I think it may feed over to, hey, they like showing up, they like learning other things, that love of learning, if you can find that passion for people, so, yeah, I think that's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I had a couple of questions on the, the elementary school plans. They're, they're pretty much identical, which is good, we're staying with, you know, with the same focus. Talk a little bit about the, the goal to reduce the non-medical-related nurse visits by 10%, which is a goal, I think, in four of the five elementary schools. Does anyone want to speak to that as to, I take it this is tied to the problem we're seeing with anxiety? So who's the lucky person?
I think we've found it designated spokesperson.
Mrs. Powers.
Is this one of those where everybody pointed right at my letter, or?
Good evening. So I think across the elementary schools, what we have been noticing is that there's been an increase in our absences and tardies. And to go along with that, we're also noticing that we have a lot of non-medical visits to the school nurse. A lot of that has to go with perhaps mental health, perhaps a break from the classroom. And so there's been increase in visits to the school nurse. And as you can see in the school improvement plans, we have put into place various resources to try to decrease those visits, such as sensory hallways and other various implementations that the other elementary schools are doing. I could speak for Riverside, for example. Daisy, our therapy dog, is an example. Sensory hallways is an example. Other elementary schools, what are the, some of the other implementations? A corner in the principal's office, for example, where a child might walk in, it's a different type of seating, various manipulatives that the child can use to regulate and to calm, perhaps they're having a difficult day, moment, half hour, maybe the work might be challenging, and they just need a break. So rather than hopefully heading over to the nurse's office, where the nurse is just going to say, it's time to get back to class, it's an opportunity for children to have other resources throughout the day where they can take a break, whether it's a mind break, a physical break. And I think, you know, we're also noticing that the children are taking breaks around the building, but we want them to be a little bit more purposeful. And so perhaps the sensory hallway is a physical movement where children go through specific. movement where children go through specific paths to do different type of tasks, whether it's push-ups against the wall, whether it's a finger maze on the wall, whether it's hopping, jumping. Some of us worked closely with our physical therapists, our occupational therapists, to create a sensory hallway that makes most sense for all of our students.
Do we have a, we don't, because I'm thinking, Arthur, from the Dark Ages, remember recess?
I do, Eric, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, do we have a formal recess process now, or?
We absolutely do. So when children are heading to lunch, they might start with recess, whether it's 17, 20 minutes or so, or so forth. However, if you could imagine recess with lots of students, where perhaps a break might be one or two students at a time. So it's a little bit more focused and more purposeful. And trying to manage recess with all the different social interactions, friendships, sometimes a little bit of drama. And so I think this takes it away, and having all these various resources are a little bit more purposeful for students.
Now, since you're the spokesman for the group, apparently. Question about, you mentioned starting out issues about tardiness and absences. So that's a little different from you have the student in the classroom, in the, in the building, and you're trying to deal with something that comes up. So how are we looking at the issue of if you're seeing a blip in absences and tardiness, parents have some control over that, hopefully. So what are we doing on that end?
I think our message is very important to our families, how important it is for all students in the classrooms to start their day together, especially during that SEL block, which is such an important part of our day. So I think the message, it is our responsibility to work closely with our families as a partnership, to really help and support them to have their children come to school on time and have less absences, really trying to also work where parents, families, although sometimes it's hard to, it's hard to avoid, but trying to help families take family vacations during vacation time for the schools, as opposed to, you know, in the middle of March, where, when MCAS perhaps is starting up. So again, just trying to work really closer with our families and to reiterate the importance of children being in school on time every day. And of course, we understand circumstances happen all the time, and we want our children to come to school healthy, but the goal is always for our kids to be in school and on time.
Well, I think dealing with the parents in those situations is a, is a delicate matter, because a lot of parents, you know, each parent's working a job, they've both got to be at work, and having a student who suddenly doesn't want to go to school, or is delaying getting ready, it could throw the whole family into an uproar, and the last thing they then want to do is hear from the school about the issue. Yet, it has to be addressed.
And I think, as Violetta said, we're doing that through building the relationships and then having the resources. So really looking at the student engagement piece, is that we want school to be a place that students, all students want to come to.
Yeah.
Not to have that anxiety or that, that stomach ache in the morning about coming to school that then, as you said, can sort of just throw the morning off. And then, working through student services, we have two BCBA's that are really working closely with all of our schools, but especially our elementary schools, to support families and strategies for getting to school on time and then being at school on a consistent basis.
I could also add one more piece.
Sure.
When a parent, a family might call and say, but my child doesn't want to come to school, or is having a hard time coming into school, we will always say, drive them to school, we'll take them on, and we'll help them get their day started. We work closely with our school's social workers, our school nurse, ourselves, the classroom teacher. And I promise you, once they're in our buildings, they're ready to go. They see their peers, they're ready to learn. And we always make a call home to say, everything is okay, everyone's calm, and we're ready to get back to work. So as long, as long as they're in our buildings, we're ready to go, yes.
Seems like a good approach.
Yes.
And this is really for, Great Oak is the, is?
Can I just ask a question while Violetta's up there, since you mentioned this? Sorry to interrupt.
No, please.
About the nurse visits, and I know this is for all the schools, trying to bring them down. When students come to the nurse, do we have any kind of policy, for lack of a better word, in place, or practice in place, where the nurse asks, you know, what were you doing in class before you got here? They do? Okay, great. Just?
They actually.
Okay.
And so they do that in actual football, they're with relationship.
Okay, great, because I would think we could get some trends there, that, you know, kids are anxious about a certain element, and maybe we could rework how we're approaching that particular element. But you guys are already on it, great.
Thank you.
So Great Oak has a zone of regulation, right? Can you tell us a little about that? You guys work so hard on these, we have to ask, right?
Yeah.
There's too many regulations.
Okay, good evening. So the, Great Oak has a different social emotional learning goal, just based on where our staff is and where our students are. And one of the things that we're implementing this year is called the zones of regulation, and other schools have used parts of it. And essentially, it's helping students to identify what their emotion is. And so there are four zones. The blue zone is kind of lethargic and sleepy and kind of not ready to learn. The green zone is very ready to learn. The red is kind of on, or the yellow is I'm feeling a little frustrated, I'm feeling a little fidgety, and red is I'm angry, I'm frustrated, I can't work. And so we need students to identify where they are in, in that. Every feeling is okay, but where are you? And what strategy can you use to get back ready to learn? So our staff is spending some time this year familiarizing ourselves with that, along with the strategies. And that's where you see some of the toolkits that we're going to be developing to help students when they are dysregulated, to get right back into the green zone. We have posters in the lobby, there's one in my office, and they'll be in all of the common areas, and in every classroom, so students can identify what they're feeling and how they're going to get back to the classroom ready to learn.
Interesting approach. Thank you.
You know, Eric, I was just thinking about, you brought up recess, and how far we've come, because 50 years ago, in 1969, 70, when I was in third grade, at Great Oak, we used to play a game. And the game was that one person had a football, and every other kid would try and tackle the kid and take the football away, and then that kid would run around. And there'd be a, there'd be a, somebody out there, and the only thing that the person out there cared about at Great Oak was not any of this stuff where you were like jumping, crushing kids, everything. It was the tree. You couldn't go near the tree. So if you ever went near the tree, everybody was in trouble. If you, if you broke somebody's leg, it was fine. But, so I don't think recess in our time, I don't think recess in our time was actually that good.
No. You probably have a fair point there. There were a lot of trips to the nurse after recess, I think. I think I'm all set, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Great. No, thank you all. My questions that I had were asked already by the board, but thank you for the hard work that you put into this every day, all year long. So with that, all those in favor of the 2019, 2023 K through 12 school improvement plans for our first reading?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you.
Great. So next, as we begin to transition into the next one on our Smith School Building Project, which is really the logistical pieces, I ask that our administrators can take a break and move forward. They have a busy month of September with many open houses this month, and we thank them, since we had the AC wasn't working in August, for them to be here at the August meeting. So we'll see them at our AC meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't even hesitate.
Not hesitate.
Didn't even hesitate.
At least you know how to clear out a room.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you. Okay. So now that the rest of the business, yes, that we have, we have our Smith School Project. As Keith said, it's moving forward, and now some of the technical pieces of resolutions that need to be approved by our school committee. So the superintendent recommends the approval of the following resolutions for the Smith School Building Project Collaborative for High Performing Schools, the CHIPS program, and it will be a resolution for credit to 2.1 district-level commitment in OM3 performance benchmarking, and an OM11 Energy Star appliance and equipment.
So moved.
Second.
All right. So Katie, want to talk about the process and what Mary Beth, as our chair, needs to do?
Sure. So I, we need to vote on these as separate resolutions. That way they're documented in the minutes as separate resolution. So this is part of the high-performing schools. We did this for the high school. It results in additional reimbursement from the state if we complete this process, and also just being a good global citizen and designing an efficient building. So the first one is just the commitment to designing and building a green, high-performing school. The second one is analyzing building data usage and tweaking systems and settings based on that, really around energy, the HVAC, the heating and the cooling. And the third one is around only buying Energy Star appliances from microwaves to fridges to any classroom equipment that we have.
Point of order, Madam Chair. In reading through this, it looked like the first two were resolutions. They're written as resolutions, they're presented as resolutions, but the third, on, I believe, the equipment piece, is actually a policy. And I think it actually states that it's a policy. So I would treat that as something, I think, that would end up in our policy manual versus a resolution. I'm probably picking a nit, but that's how I see it.
Well, yeah, it does say policy.
Okay.
So.
I think looking at that is true. So we may want to do that for a first reading, that if it's policy, we may need to do a second vote on that at our October meeting.
Different process that we use.
Right. We would have to go to our policy committee, is that?
I think if, if there's questions when we get to that one, then the policy subcommittee could take it back, but if it's standard because it's the energy efficient appliances, and we're okay, I think we could go forward.
Kind of just makes common sense that we would want to do that, in my opinion, right?
Oh, absolutely. No disagreement with the policy.
So it would be a first reading on that?
Right.
Yes. Okay. So.
Okay.
Now, do you need us to read the resolutions?
You do not. I think we could just go off of the, just make an individual motion for each resolution and then pass them, just as, as written.
Okay. So for the resolution for the credit to?
Eric, Eric, make the motion.
All right. So Dave, did you make the motion to approve all of them, or?
I did, yes.
Would you withdraw that motion?
I would be happy to.
All right, thank you. So, Madam Chair, I move that the board adopt the Resolution on Sustainability in the Design and Construction of High Performance Schools as it appears in our materials.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the resolution for district-level commitment passes. Okay?
Okay, so now. Madam Chair, I move that the school committee adopt the Resolution on Energy Benchmarking and Post-Ocency Analysis as it appears in our materials.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I have a question. It says, we resolve that the school committee directs the staff to track the building energy use and conduct energy benchmarking annually. Do we currently do that for our other buildings?
We do, where the data's available, yes.
Okay. And, and so this presumably is in the same format, is no additional administrative difficulty, ambiguity, anything else. It's part of what we normally do anyway, and it's, I just want to make sure it's easy, number one.
Nope, it would be, and it would be what we would want to do as part of the new building. So it will, the, the new building will give us reports in order to be able to look at this information, as we get for the middle school and the high school being newer buildings.
Is this a resolution that we signed for the high school, or any other buildings that we've currently had?
Yes.
Oh, we haven't approved these?
Yes, we are CHIPS as well, and that's why I was actually trying to pull up our policy manual, but I can't find it, see if we already passed the Energy Star appliances and put it in last time or not. But we did these same type of resolutions as part of the Danvers High School Project.
And so?
This is just the latest round for Smith School.
Okay. And conduct the energy benchmarking annually as long as we have the building?
Yes.
Like in perpetuity, basically. You're, you're never, I mean, not that you would ever, and not that it's a problem, but I just look at that and say, okay, every single year, you're agreeing to do this. Not that it's a problem.
And DPW does it in one form or another, as we look at what our energy costs are, and what we're gonna do for budgets in terms of electricity and fuel.
Okay.
So that's part of the benchmarking that they perform annually anyways.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure it wasn't any undue administrative thing that we're promising to do forever. But if we do it anyway, and it's fine, and we've already agreed to it, then I'm fine with that.
Anything else? Anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the performance benchmarking resolution passed, and then the Energy Star, we're putting that as a first?
Yes, it's not in our policy manual currently, so.
So we typically vote on the recommendation from the superintendent, so we assume the superintendent recommends that we adopt this for a first reading?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the Energy Star policy is approved for a first reading.
And we'll work on where it would fit in our policy manual under facilities. Perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Well, we'll have to bring it back for a vote on a second.
Thank you, yes. We do need that for a second reading.
Yep. Okay. So the next item is the MASC, MAS S Conference and Delegate. School Committee needs to appoint a delegate. This is the annual conference that's held every November down at Cape Cod, a joint conference between the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents. This year, Keith is presenting a session on school safety.
Flexible learning environments.
Flexible learning environments. And Dave, are you?
I believe I'm on the panel.
Yes.
Related to that presentation, so I'll be there for that day.
Anyone else interested in attending and being a delegate this year? Conference is November 6th through the 9th. The delegate session is Friday afternoon at 3 o'clock.
Which is the 9th, correct?
Correct.
Is that something that you're planning to attend?
So I'd be more than happy to attend, unless there's others that would like to go.
I'm content with you, Madam Chair.
She knew how this is gonna go.
But I do enjoy going to this conference. There are a lot of different workshops and a lot of professionals there that actually provide a lot of good information and are very open to having, you know, people ask questions. So I'd be more than happy to go and be the delegate if the committee so chooses.
We would love you to go.
We would, absolutely.
So we need a vote on that?
I don't think so. Your chair, you can appoint yourself.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm appointing myself to be the delegate. And then I will be attending, I'll be going down as well on the 6th, so I'll be able to see Keith and Dave present, and then maybe attend dinner together?
Yes.
Workshop or so. I think next month is when the resolutions come out, so we'll make those available to everyone on the board, hopefully ahead of time, so that you can take a look through and let me know if there's any thing you'd like me to bring up during the delegate session. Okay? All right. Homeschooling proposals.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends the approval of the Notice of Intent for Home Education for the 2019, 2020 school year, for the three applications enclosed.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions, comments?
And those are all the families that we have worked with in the past now will have submitted theirs.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Homeschooling proposals passed.
Thank you. We have overnight and out-of-state field trip requests. The superintendent recommends the approval of the overnight out-of-state field trip requests for the DHS cross-country to Warwick, Rhode Island, and the Holton Richmond School to New York City, April 30th through May 1st. This was a date change from the field trip request at our last meeting, and for the class of 2020.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I just, yeah, I'm just sorry, just curious. I didn't, now as I'm reading this. And it says, and the class of 2020. What is that?
That was an error in their piece, that if we look on a fundraising request, it's actually, should be under the fundraising.
Under that, okay.
So we will fix that piece of it.
Okay.
I got stuck on that, too. Thank you.
I was wondering where the class was going.
Yeah.
You're apparently.
They will be raising some money, though.
All those in favor of the overnight field trip request?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So that passes.
Thank you. So our fundraising request, the superintendent recommends the approval of the fundraising events for the class of 2020 and the DHS field hockey.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
No, as a parent of a child in the class of 2020, I guess my friends and relatives will be getting lots of Yankee candles.
Hey, that's awesome. All right. All those in favor of the fundraising requests?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fundraising request passed. Order of business, communications.
Thank you. Our North Shore Education Consortium, our first board meeting is this coming Wednesday, so we'll have updates at our next meeting. so we'll have updates at our next meeting, but on their website shows all the programs that they had over the summer.
Good. Legislation.
I heard from Representative Spiliotis's office today. On Friday afternoon, Governor Baker filed a close-out budget to address the surplus realized in fiscal year 19. The funding proposal includes $1,998,540 in additional special education circuit breaker funding, and $15 million for an infrastructure grant program through the Secretary of Education for upgrading and retrofitting school buildings with safety and security enhancements. This proposal is likely to be taken up by the legislature in the coming weeks. Please trust that Representative Spiliotis will monitor this spending package, and that will keep the committee posted. Tomorrow, Representative Spiliotis is very proud to join Superintendent Lisa Dana and Danvers High Principal Jason Columbino as they showcase the Early College and Innovative Pathways briefing in which the Danvers program will be showcased to legislators and staff at the State House. So that sounds like that's quite a thing to be able to do, Lisa, so congratulations.
Thank you. We'll share that with you at our next meeting. Thank you.
And that's it.
Thank you, Eric. Subcommittee liaison update. DEEP, their monthly meeting will be next Wednesday at the First Ipswich Bank at 7:45. The DEEP Wine and Food Tasting is taking place on October 24th. Tickets will be on sale shortly, and that's it right now for DEEP. Everyone is invited to the DEEP meeting. Certainly always looking for some new members to come and get involved and help to provide features of the Danvers Public Schools with some great teacher grants, and we can only do that through our fundraising, so looking forward to a new year. Danvers Cares.
Danvers Cares, we had our monthly meeting today, so it was a good review of the past year, and also to look forward to this year as well. And so some of the program updates involve the Summer Jobs Program, which was very successful, so it was nice hearing about that. Social-emotional learning, monitoring, some of the youth group advisor work that they're doing, and then, of course, a lot of the activities that we had planned last year are coming back again this year, right? So Light the Night Purple, the Community Speaker Series is replacing Parent University as well, and then we'll have the scholarships again, so that was a good discussion.
A little bit more on the speaker series? So instead of having Parent University, there'll be speakers throughout the year?
That is correct, yes. And it'll be on a variety of topics. So many of the, some of the topics that were covered perhaps at Parent University would be, had generated a lot of interest, and so they thought maybe having a larger sort of speaker series on those, as well as some additional things, would be good to have.
Thank you, Dave. CPAC, we already heard from them this evening. Policy.
We had a meeting this morning that Max and Cynthia were at. Nothing really substantive in the meeting, just looking at the policy manuals and kind of seeing if there's a way to clean them up a bit and make them consistent across the district, and, you know, look at some of the language to make it clearer and more simplified.
Thank you, Dave.
And as we, as those changes are made, they'll be brought up at future meetings.
Very good. Thank you. Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee.
Yes. Right now, they're primarily working on, in terms of an event, the Martin Luther King Day will be the next major event. They're working with the schools closely as they do every year. The next meeting is Thursday, September 19th at 7:00 at the police station, actually, where they meet every month.
And I reached out to Town Hall this morning to set up our subcommittee meetings for education, where you reminded me of that with the Martin Luther King events. We normally meet somewhere before around Columbus Day, that time of October, to talk about the MLK event, make sure we have, all know what we're doing, and then we'll come back and be ready for January, and we meet again in the springtime.
Good.
Thank you.
Ironically, if the committee is considering removing the Columbus Day name...
I know, the words came out of my head, yes.
I saw that this morning, so that...
The dam is patch, yes.
Yeah, they mentioned that.
All right, thank you, Eric. Minutes.
I move, Madam Chair, to approve and release the minutes from the August 19th, 2019 regular meeting. Yes, to approve and release.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Okay, the minute's passed. Budget and donations.
As part of implementing our student activity accounts last year, part of our yearly reporting will be providing the balances of all of our student activity accounts, so you'll see that attached. They're all within reason of where we think different classes and groups should be essentially at the end of last year.
Any questions for Keith?
Just a quick question. So what would the, when you have a general sub-fund, which I see at the Holton Richmond, what is that? Because you've got some, we've obviously got some very targeted accounts. So can the general sub-funds be used to, say, buttress those accounts, like Model UNS $223? If you wanted to send some students, that's probably not enough. So would they raise money, or could you take money from the sub-fund and contribute to that?
A combination of both. You could take money from the sub-fund to help provide scholarships or help support the smaller groups.
Thank you.
Bless you.
All right, no other questions for Keith? Next month, will we see an updated treasures or...
You'll get to hear lots from me next month. So next month, we'll have the final budget report for FY19, which we did close out on budget. You'll have the budget transfers report, so from all of our hiring and all the changes that have happened since we passed the budget in February, as well as the first monthly budget report for the school year.
Thank you. Personnel.
You have the monthly personnel report. You'll see all of our hirings and a few last-minute resignations. We're happy to report as of today, we're down to only two positions left to fill out of our roughly 500 employees, so I think we're in pretty good shape.
Very good. Any other information or questions or comments from the board? I did see that you just received $150,000 from the state for the pathways, Project Lead the Way.
Capital Skills Grant, so it's an extension of Project Lead the Way, but also, Keith, to talk about some of the equipment that will be purchased from that grant.
So it's really to help make capital purchases? So there's separate Project Lead the Way grants that help support some of those renewable supply costs, but it's for durable items? So computers, we were able to buy the latest and greatest smart technology of table saws and chop saws used in the shop that have really amazing shut-offs, and that if your finger even gets close to it, it just shuts the saw off, so some safe technology. We're researching what other type of equipment we want to buy with it, as well as just desktop computers. So the business lab needed a new computer, so it helped fund that, so we're excited about that opportunity. It was really around business and healthcare, right, for this round? And then the next round will be more for the, no, go ahead.
The manufacturing.
For manufacturing, and so it was really manufacturing and business this time. The next round could be for healthcare. So it also, it ties into the innovation pathway, so they just released another round of like $20 million in funding, so we plan to apply for another grant this year to help those other innovation pathways.